So we'll start the regular meeting of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission for October already. 2021, wow. Where'd the year go? So I'll call the meeting order, we'll start with seating of the members. John, you want to start?
John Smollega.
Rob Horrigan.
Andy Engel.
Do Fitch.
Lenora Palatnik.
Awesome, we have a quorum. I will seat Lenora for, who, who, wait, wait. No, we have everybody, right? Yeah, yeah, so I don't need to see Lenora's or, um, so we have a full quorum with the five members. Um, we'll move on to communication with the public, which is a period where the public could complain to us or tell us what we're doing good or bad, or, so anybody from the public have any complaints? Really?
No, none.
I, I have to tell you, I had a lot of calls today about water. No kidding, three inches in seven hours, it, it's hard, but, um, we do our best. So I'll move on with the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 28th, 2021. Think I need new glasses.
So moved.
Second? Any, any discussion? Wow, Julie, you're, you're awesome, Julie, you really are. We're lucky to have you, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go to old business, and, and by the way, Julie, they really are great minutes. They're very detailed, I, I really appreciate your talent, and it, and it is a talent, I thank you for that.
We, we need a vote on the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, okay, do we have a motion to vote, um, to approve the minutes for September? The dog votes yes.
Sorry, that's Eli.
So moved, Russ.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Eli, any discussion?
None. I'm muted as soon as we vote.
All right, all in favor, aye.
Aye. We got a rough from Eli, too.
That's great. Okay, we'll move on to old business. Fesher, 67 Battle Swamp Road, remove existing garage and pool house, construct new porch on main house, garage and pool house. Okay, so I had the pleasure, and it was a pleasure, to go out with Lenora on this. Lenora and I got to spend a morning together and it was fun. Um, we, we went to another sidewalk because she asked me to come and to help her understand things, and I did, and then I invite her on this one. Lenora, do you have any issue with this one?
No.
I don't either, um, it is near the brook, they're knocking down the existing garage. They're building a bigger garage, they're putting a small porch on the side of the house. We went and looked at it all, it's all bedrock there. So they can't put the, the stormwater from the roof into the ground. So I said that that needs to, then you can't have gutters because you don't want to focus the water. And the applicant agreed to that.
Yeah.
Right, Lenora?
Yes.
Do you have any issues?
No.
I don't either. Um, anybody, Rob, I know you were worried about water, just, you know, it wasn't the applicant on the phone call, it was, uh, the guy who designed it and didn't, he didn't really have many questions for where water was gonna go.
But wasn't there a driveway relocation, too?
Right, uh, right, oh, good for Rob, we were there.
Russ, this is Michael Fleischer, I'm, I'm actually on.
Hi, Mike, how are you?
Hi.
Good to see you again.
It was, it was great to meet you.
Really nice to meet you, Lenora.
Yeah, yeah, there is a driveway relocation, they're gonna come in from the backside. Um, it's a very short stretch, I, I didn't see an issue with it, Rob. But Julie, could you bring up the plan?
My only concern is, Russ, we, that we just, we require everyone to do driveway drainage and, and about the driveway drainage?
Let it, let it come up. I didn't, because the bedrock comes up where the driver is going rather than down, so all the water would, um, not affect the stream. Could you focus in on that driveway, Julie? Rob, see how the bedrock is coming up? Topos are coming up. So, but you make a good point, where's that drainage gonna go? Okay, this is why we're a commission. Mike, um, Rob's concern is any water that falls on the driveway, there's no drainage shown. Unless there's other maps that, is there a catch face in, or where's that water gonna go?
So, I, I'm not the, uh, I'm not the expert here, I, I think Brian Neff is on, I'm not sure, I see somebody saying.
Oh, he's here, Brian, the only Brian in Roxbury.
Um, and, uh, and, and Brian has sort of been helping us with this, so I, if, if there's something that needs to be done there, whatever you guys think needs to be done, we're happy to do it.
So Brian, could you answer that?
What's a, it's a, it's a very short section of driveway. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
Oh, uh, yeah, it's a, it's a very, very short section of driveway. Uh, the area surrounding that is, is, is pretty flat, especially up by the road. So there's definitely no impact on any water flowing into Battle Swamp Road itself.
Is it gonna sheet?
Just the garage is gonna be removed.
Yeah, is it gonna sheet flow, Brian?
Yeah, from.
Is that what your proposal is, it's better the sheet flow it than focus it?
Yeah, it's gonna stay on the property, basically we go off to both sides. Um, that's, again, it's a very, very short section of driveway. Probably only, maybe first part's only maybe forty feet, something like that. So it's, it's a, it's a very, very short driveway compared to most driveways.
But if we had a rainstorm like today, would you be comfortable with it?
Yeah, if there's enough basically land around that, it would just disperse on both sides.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very, very small driveway.
All right, I agree. Rob, you have any questions?
No, I, I just, you know, we kind of take pride in making everyone take care of their drainage, so there's no increased runoff. So that's my only concern, we, we require them to.
Let Brian answer that, Brian, you, you know how we are.
Part of the driveway is gonna be removed, the existing driveway, existing garage is gonna be removed, so this, this kind, there's some removal of existing pervious, impervious surface there. Um, the site there is very shallow to bedrock. So you can't really do much in terms of a subsurface system there because the ledge is so shallow. Um, same even with the rain guard, it's, you've got a rock right on top of the ground. But I think fortunately, you know, the driveway is so short and so small, it's gonna have a negligible effect on the site itself and on, on the roadway.
What's, uh, Brian, what's the surface gonna be?
Um, looks like it's going to be.
Is it paved or stone, or?
Looks like it's gonna be stone in terms of the plan itself, it's an architect's plan.
I, I think the plan was, I think the plan was to pave it.
Oh, okay. So water would definitely sheet off both sides of that into the grass on both sides. Um, so it would be tough to put any kind of a dedicated underground system there, even a grassline swales would be tough because you'd be hitting bedrock on the first shovel fall uh, in terms of, um, in terms of the area that's there.
So where's the water go?
Well, it's gonna basically sheet flow on both sides, I mean, there's, there's, there's grass areas on both sides which would basically take that water, it's not gonna go onto Battle Swamp Road to create any kind of a safety hazard.
Right, absolutely.
On the property.
Um, the brook I'm worried about.
Well, the brook is.
Actually, to be honest with you, Rob, being there with, with Lenora, um, it, it would go down where there's a existing pool and pool house. Right, Brian?
Yeah, that's downhill of the, um, of the garage itself and the pool house.
Well, just for everyone's information, you know, a lot of times when there's restrictive drainage areas, you can create a drainage map with the driveway itself. And you, you, rather than put an impervious surface on it, you put a, a surface that will drain the water into the stone that's underneath it. I'm not saying that needs to be done here, I'm just saying that there are other options on, you know, if there's limitations in the drainage areas.
Well, in meeting Michael, he wants this done right, and trust me, he doesn't want water to go over that driveway and into his pool and wipe out everything that's already there, so Brian, would you take another look at that? Let's just, let's design for a fifty-year storm and make sure that, it, look, he's the one who will suffer more than us, more than the brook. It's got a long way to go to get to that brook. If you're not, if you're comfortable, I trust you, you, you know, you have integrity, I, I totally trust you. If you tell me this is a good plan, um, I'm, I'm gonna go for that, but, uh, I want to make sure on behalf of the stream and, and for the client.
Well, in terms of, uh, like a permeable, permeable paving system, that's possible. Uh, it's kind of up to Michael as far as he wants to kind of go that route in terms of, of design. Um, it is possible to do something like that. Um, I prefer the owner on that, that kind of thing.
Brian, if you say that there's not an issue with the way it's designed, I'm fine with that, I just brought that up as a, as an option.
I'm with it, I'm not asking for another design. I want to make sure that water doesn't pour into his pool and, because that's a ten-foot drop-off with a retaining wall there. And I don't, Mike, I apologize because when we're on site, I didn't really have a problem with it, but now you look at it. Um, I'm trying to save you a problem, but if your engineer's telling me there's no problem, Bri, we have a lot of faith in Brian. But Brian, if you want to take another look, then, um.
I just think in terms of the scale of this thing, this is much shorter than the average driveway. Um, this is garage, it's like right at the minimum setback distance off the property line in the front. So this driveway is probably one of the shortest driveways in town in terms of, uh, comparative to other properties, longer driveways, it's definitely a concern. Um, just by the scope of this thing, I, I can't see him having a problem in terms of, of runoff impacting the pool or the surrounding areas, it's enough grass area there that's relatively flat, I think that's gonna absorb that.
All right, I mean, I'm, you're the expert.
I just think in terms of the scale of this driveway, this is, this is a very, very small driveway. Usually we, we look at something with one much longer driveway having a definite impact, especially road driveways that drain down toward the road. Um, and also this driveway is probably a couple of hundred feet away from the brook, so that's pretty far down in the, the valley behind there. So it's, it's way out of regulated area. I don't think it's a problem, to be honest with you, in my personal opinion and professional opinion, I don't think there's a problem with this at all.
And we, 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 we respect that, so, any other questions, Rob?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion? I know Dennis McDonald tells me I'm not supposed to make motions, but I did the sidewalk. Lenora is not a, a voting member right now, so I have no choice, being the person that saw it to make a motion to approve this as a non-regulated activity. And before I say that, Brian, it is non-regulated, right? Everything's.
That's correct, right, everything else is a hundred feet away.
So I'm gonna make that motion.
Second.
Okay, Andy, seconds, any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Good luck, Michael.
Thank you, uh, and thank you all for the thoughtful discussion.
Love having you in town, so, welcome to Roxbury.
I, I've only been here twenty-five years, so I know I'm still new. Thank you.
Let me tell you, Michael, um, I once asked Bucky Lowe, who I served sixteen years on the Board of Selectmen, when I become a townie, and he told me after sixteen years, never.
Never.
So welcome to the club.
Understood, understood, thank you, and thank you guys all for, you know, your service and doing this work, it's important to the.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
So what's next?
What's next is Four Painter Ridge Road.
How do you, I can't, I, I can't read the name, what, what?
It's under Academy Design, and it should be Ben Pilchard should be here.
I'm here, yes.
Academy of Design, and you can't write better than that? Okay, Academy of Design, who's here for that? Hi, Ben.
I am Ben, yes.
Hi, Ben.
How are you, Russ?
Oh, that's better writing, okay. Only joking, Ben. Um, this is on Four Painter Ridge Road.
You should have, uh, a, another plan.
Yeah, there's a more current map that came out.
That's more familiar?
That's it.
Okay.
Okay, so Ben, last meeting you were asking us what we like, and it, you know, it's not our say, what we like, it's you tell us what you're gonna do and we vote on it.
Okay, so.
So we, we've gotten to that point, right?
I think so.
Yep.
I, I just, I cleaned the plan up, you wanted to see what the, you know, what the final, uh, thoughts were, or final plans, and this is it. Uh, so, um, I can I answer any questions?
No, sorry about my phone, I, I should get rid of that phone because I never answer it, but. Everybody look at this.
Andy and I went out to look at it, by the way, Russ.
Oh, great, okay, that's what I'm looking for, go ahead, John, thank you.
Um, I didn't have any issues with it, I mean, it's, it's high elevation-wise and, and, uh, everything around there is ledge.
Andy?
Yeah, that was my take on it, too, um, you know, personally, I'm not sure why you'd want to clear that, that beautiful little grove, but, um, we, it's your property. Um, and I don't really.
Will it affect wetlands?
No, that's the issue, no, I don't, I'd like to be sure that there's good, uh, silt fence below the cleared area. Um, but because I think it is mostly wedge all the way down to that pond, there's not much to, uh, stop any flow that does come off of there until the grass is established, but, um, if, uh, if the silt fence is done correctly, I don't have an issue at all.
Motion?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so, um, on the, the last, the last plan that was submitted, uh, there was an alternate location for a garage, but that's been eliminated, this plan represents, uh, you know, the, the, the final plan to go forward.
That's it, so.
And, and so, you, you, Russ, you're correct, it's, it's just, uh, uh, no gutters.
Yeah.
It's all ledge up there.
But, but it says on this plan, alternate location for the garage.
So the.
Maybe you need to fix that, Ben, for the, for the next, you know, for the final drawings.
Okay, so, uh, that, I guess, Michael Alex is doing the, uh, the, 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 the plan, and I guess, uh, he did not, uh, modify that, there was a, there was, um, there was another location of, of the garage that was, uh, near, very near the house, and I've eliminated that, this is, this is, this is it.
Okay, so you're putting, you're putting it where the alternate location is.
So there's a typo on the map where alternate should be taken out.
Yeah.
For the minutes.
Okay, Ben, I, I'm happy to take the alternate out.
Well, either, either it is or it isn't, I'm not telling you what to do, but. There's no problem in the future, that's why.
So I guess, Russ, I, that just was my concern because it was alternate location for the garage, because I remember they had the other, which I understand what he just said, and that's fine, but also like with the proposed silt fence, I just want to make sure that that's the silt fence that's like, uh, Andy had recommended, that that silt fence is gonna be put in there. I mean, I didn't go to the site, but for Andy and John.
Yeah, you need to get, good, well, so you're, you're pulling good ones here, you need to get rid of proposed fence, Ben.
I just don't want there to be confusion down the road.
No, you're right, it needs to be, this is where it's gonna be, and.
Um, well, I mean, I guess, it, it, yeah, look, you, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is what the proposal is, right? So if it's accepted, then that's.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, Ben, fair enough, fair enough.
It's not built, or it's, it's proposed.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to get picky, but then we've run into some problems over the years where if it wasn't spelled out, then, you know, with construction. So we just want to make sure that things are in place, that's all.
So your, your detail to things makes this commission better, so please get picky.
Ben, that, Ben, up by the, uh, house, there's a circle that is labeled garage?
It gets correct.
Is, is that actually a garage?
That is, it is a one-car garage.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You can make that into a yurt.
That's what it really looks like.
And John will be camping there next week. And again, on the garage, uh, roof drainage to the ground? No gutters?
On there's, there's no gutters on the existing garage, there are no gutters.
No, on the, okay, all right.
And on the proposed garage, there will be no gutters.
All right. Any other questions? I'll look for a motion.
Move we accept this as a regulated activity?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, okay. Next.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes, Ben.
Um, it's, so that, that means this plan is proposed?
No, this plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's approved?
See, you got yourself confused.
I'm stuck on that proposed.
Yes, it's approved, you can move forward, it's, uh, looks like the fee was paid, you can move forward, but the conditions are you need to notify the inland wetlands enforcement officer who's John Cody, five days before you begin, so he knows what you're up to.
Happy to do it.
Yeah, and if he gets a call, we know what's going on.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ben.
Wonderful, all right, well, thank you everyone for taking the time to, to review this.
Thank you, yeah.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
We'll move on to Jennifer Benner on South Street, which.
I have to recuse myself, Russ.
Okay, Andy's gonna recuse himself, which is good, Andy, because now I could put Lenora on as a voting member, and she was there for the sidewalk. So, Lenora, you are a voting member on this.
Okay.
All right, so. So Lenora and I went out and looked, and you see all these wetlands. Um, could you show me the plan, Julie? With the house and everything?
Let's see what I have. I do not have a plan.
It, it might be, uh, because the last meeting we had a plan. But that's okay, Julie, this is the problem with, um, with Zoom. But it does save gas and money and time, so. Um, they're proposing a house right where that CR is, see where it shows a shed. Um, they had clearly marked out where the driveway is, which is all the way to your left. It's coming in there, going up and put in the uplands. Um, the septic was clearly staked up, and, and I know there's a drawing, otherwise I wouldn't accept this.
Yeah, there is a drawing, I did a plan for it, Russ.
Do you have it, Brian, or, I know.
I have it, I have it on paper here, but.
No, that's all right, but, um, Lenora and I looked at it, and that wetlands is a very it's almost like a, you can't even tell it's a wetland, right where it's coming in, it goes into the road drainage, and there's a pipe right there that crosses South Street. Um, and the other area is low-lying is what it is. Where, where you see the M, M Y near the street, that's a higher elevation. So that higher elevation is backing up water that's coming in, and it created a wetland by soil type. But there's no real running water there, it shows an intermittent stream, I bet today is, it's probably running, but most days it's not. We looked at where the house was and I didn't have a problem with it at all, I thought it was a good plan. Um, and the wetlands, from my perspective, will be protected even though they're gonna be in a, a planned zone. Lenora, you have anything?
No.
Hey, hey, Russ, I got a question for you, or maybe Brian, um, where the house is going, is that, uh, what, what's the topography like? Is that, you know, significant between there and what they have marked as wetlands, or?
No, it's flat.
Okay.
And then behind it is a steep, steep hill.
Right.
Um, but that, it's the flattest part of the whole property, and where you see wetlands is kind of a low depression, am I right, Brian?
That's true, it's a low-lying area there.
So does the topography go up from the shed to that stone wall behind it?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Steeply, it's flat and then it goes way up.
How, how big is, how big is the house, and how close to the wetlands is it?
It's a, uh, three-bedroom house.
Where'd he go?
House, house is about seventy-five feet away from wetlands.
And the driveway kind of goes to the north and then kind of slopes down to the street?
The, the driveways to the north, and then it, it stays almost on the property line, and then when it gets to the flat area, which is CR with the shed, occurs towards the house, there's a garage, which they clearly staked out, and then the house. It doesn't look like a big house to me, Brian, how many square feet?
It's probably about maybe fourteen hundred square feet, it's pretty small.
Yeah.
And then there's, there's silt fence proposed all along the driveway and in front of the house.
That's all on the plan, which.
I know, but I'm not, I don't see a plan.
No, I know, I know, I looked at the plan today.
There was a plan at the last meeting.
Yeah, I remember that.
Well, well, well done plan, um, so.
Yeah, the property was surveyed, it was flagged out, surveyor located the flags.
No, no offense to Mark Low, but this is not a Mark Low plan. Or the old Freddie Hodges plans, I love that stuff. On a napkin, no, there's a, there's an A two survey. Anybody have any questions? Again, I'm sorry, Dennis, but I'll make a motion to approve this as a regulated activity.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Great, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Brian. And I know I'd, well, I normally welcome the people to town, but she lives here. But tell her to sell her house that she's into somebody from town.
I'll do that, thanks.
Are we in new business, Julie?
We are, the next one. We're on eighty-three Squire Road.
And this is new, right?
This is new.
Right. Do you have a plan you could show us? What's he proposing? Anybody here for this? Zoom in on that. Okay, they're proposing a wall, and. They're proposing a wall, right?
Proposing, looks like two walls, B and A. Proposed silt fence.
Very good, Julie.
Russ, is this the same property where we had an issue last spring where they had started to do some work down by the brook?
Yes, there was a, there was a small excavator in the brook.
Yeah, okay.
Well, maybe they learned. Because now they're, you know, they're, they're applying. All right. Who wants to go look at it?
I already have back in the spring, so.
Yeah, but did you, do you feel comfortable looking at what they want to do, and?
You know, I, I know the property, and I can see what they want to do on the map.
Are you, do you have any issue with it?
It's the first time I've seen it.
Right, that's my point.
Yeah.
Um, shouldn't we go look and?
No, I'm not saying other people shouldn't go look. Absolutely, other people should.
Who wants to go look?
Maybe they could stake out the walls for us.
Could you let them know that, Julie?
I will.
Who wants to go look?
I'll look, I go by it all the time.
Cool, thank you, Rob.
Julie, would you just let them, or someone let me know when it's staked?
I will, um, actually, because I'm, this will go into the minutes, I'll tell Karen on Thursday when I see her. Yeah, so definitely, and we'll notify you.
Okay, great, thanks.
No problem.
Okay, next.
So this is.
Patrick Brew.
Patrick Brew.
Sixty-eight Chalobes Road West. What's he want to do?
Put a driveway in, let's get our map.
The new home construction. By Curtis Smith, okay. Could you zoom in on that?
Yes.
Is Curtis here? Kind of strange, Curtis usually shows up at, um, could you come in a little more? Like zoom in, thank you. Oh, okay. All right, it looks like if you could go up one, come down one. Anybody see any wetland flags on there? Looks like a major development though, right? I mean, might be s- small scale.
What a driveway.
Really long driveway, right?
Really long driveway, I don't see any drainage plan. Is there anything else, Julie, like, there must be. Unless he's throwing it in for us to go look at it, and they'll come back with.
Uh, good evening, everyone, uh, my name is Patrick, can you hear me?
Patrick, you there?
Yes, I'm here, good evening.
God, because we're lost.
Thank, thank you for the meeting.
Yeah, what are we doing, Patrick?
Well, I, I wish, um, you guys had this PDF, because it has all the nice colors that Kurt did.
Um, I'm, I'm sure we have it, but this is blaming on COVID.
I can always share the screen.
And, and please forgive my ignorance, I'm new to all of this. Um, but I think.
I was, I was one day, and thirty years from now, you'll be like, I want to get away from all this. But welcome, Patrick, don't worry about it, we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Um, so you have a PDF, is there any way that, Julie, we could share his screen? And he can get the PDF up?
I can definitely give him sharing rights.
Patrick, could you get the PDF up on your screen?
Sure, I can do that.
And then you hit the shared button.
All right, let me just go into.
Come on, you're young, you know all this technology crap, you can do it.
Hey, Patrick, I got a quick question for you, am I correct, it looks like that sits up on a hill?
Yes.
Okay.
On Chalobes Road?
Uh, no, that's where I live now, um, that, the location is sixty-seven Mallory Road.
Oh, okay. Let me write that down. I thought I read Chalobes.
I have the PDF up, how do I, uh, let's see.
You hit share screen, it's up on the top.
Okay.
Or down at the bottom?
Yeah, it could be, could be anything. Over, over it.
It's on the bottom for me here.
Yeah, mine's green on the bottom.
Oh, here we go, okay. Did that work?
Yep, there you go, now you know. Um, any wetlands on the property?
No. As far as I know, no.
What do you mean, as far as you know, did you have a soil scientist?
But Kurt said no, so I, I'll go with what he says.
We'll believe Kurt. That's a long driveway, what kind of drainage plan? Does Kurt must have a drain, he knows better.
Yep, so there's, there's a, there's currently an existing roughed in driveway, all the way to the top, and there's a, there's a swell that goes.
Like, like right to where the house is, or where the green line is?
Uh, right where the, if you can see the, there's a clearing there, right where the clearing starts, then it stops.
And that's all in already, been there how long?
Uh, twenty plus years.
Any washouts?
No, no, there's a, there's a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What about down on Mallory, do we have a pipe underneath the driveway to allow water to continue? Or anything like that?
No, there, at the, at the end of the driveway, there's a brook, and I see some pipes from the street going in there.
All right, so you said there are no wetlands, but are there any brooks?
All the way at the bottom there, you see that little blue.
Yeah, okay.
There's that little blue, and then it curves up.
Could you zoom in one time?
Now, let's see.
Oh, I see it, I see, okay, that's the brook, all right, it's next to the brook. But on Mallory, is there, because. Barbara Henry, or it won't be Barbara Henry, it'll be either Pat Roy, or, um, who's the other guy? Oh, Bruce, Bruce guy, sorry, um, there, we require a pipe under a driveway.
Okay.
And that's. What the first selectmen, the first selectman gives you a driveway permit, okay? And they won't give that driveway permit until wetlands approves the plan.
Okay.
And the first selectman has the authority for the first twenty feet. So he or she, it'll probably be a he, um, can require that you pave the first, it's all kinds of things they could require, but one thing that we make mandatory is that you put a pipe underneath the driveway where it meets the road, so that water continues to flow. Because, okay, over the years, me and Barbara got smart and realized that when people don't deal with driveways, where they meet the road, and the water goes out into the road, it becomes the town's problem, so.
Okay.
We don't allow that anymore. So you need to show, you need to tell Kurt that, and he needs to show a pipe there.
Okay.
Hey, hey, Russ?
Yeah.
Even though it's part of this driveway is roughed in, I really think they still need to have a drainage plan for it.
I agree, so, you know, Curtis needs to do a drainage plan for that driveway, even though it's been there twenty years. He needs to prove to us there's no reason for, um, any kind of drainage, other than what's there, and he needs to show what's there, right? Because otherwise, we don't know. I see you have a cutoff for the fire department, which is required. You know, the pull off. See where the arrow is up there, the arrow on the.
Oh, yes, I see.
Yeah, that's a, that's a pull off, which is required for the fire department.
Okay.
Long driveways, I forget, I think it's every five hundred feet. And then if you go up. Julie, if you could pull out. How big is the house?
Um, right now, thirty-four hundred square feet approximately, could be less.
Okay, could be less, all right. And where's the roof drainage going?
That I don't know, uh, I'll have to ask Kurt.
Well, you need to know. But again, don't, don't be fearful. We're nice, we're a nice bunch of people. Um, but we've been on this commission a long time, we learned our own.
It says, it says, roof leaders and footing drains to daylight.
Yeah, that magenta line going through there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Talk to Kurt and say, we don't like daylight, we like underground. We like infiltrators, what they're called, that way they, um, it's, it's not just blowing out, and it's.
Or, or rain gardens, or.
Rain gardens, but we don't allow just blowing it out anymore.
Okay.
It's a thing of the past, and you can understand why after today, a week ago, three weeks ago, five weeks, I think we have eight fifty year storms in the last two years, so. So we're getting a little harsher about drainage.
Understood.
Yep, we don't know, we don't require it where it can't be done because of ledge. Um, then we won't allow roof drains or anything like that. So you're not going to have any pools, or, um?
No, not at the moment, no.
No, no, what's your first name, I'm sorry?
Uh, Patrick.
Pat. Are, are you, are you going to live in this house, are you the owner?
Yes.
Where are you moving from, or?
Uh, sixty-eight Chalobes Road West, in Roxbury.
Okay, so you're a Roxbury person who's moving to Roxbury? Damn. No, I'm just asking, because I like to welcome people to town, I really do.
Thank you, thank you.
And so, welcome to the Mallory Road area, because I live here. Um, so for the next meeting.
Okay.
Because we couldn't approve this, this meeting, we, we have to accept that, we, looks like the application's complete to me, unless other people on the commission don't agree. And, and we can't accept it, and then at the next meeting, we would want the things that we're asking you for, that would be a pipe where it meets Mallory, roof drainage that goes in infiltrators. Tell Curtis to take a harder look at it, because he knows, he, he knows our town and what we require.
Okay, very good. Um, I do have a quick question.
Yep.
Um, in terms of power to the lot. How, how does that work, is that through ever source, or? Because there's, there's conduits that go from, from the. We're close to Mallory Road all the way up to the lot. Uh, to the, the proposed site. There's conduits that run all the way up, but I, I wasn't sure how it works in terms of getting power to the lot.
Sounds like all the powers in.
Okay, yeah, they, they.
Pat, you need somebody to look into that, you don't want to build a house and hook up and have no energy.
Yep, so they, they came and, uh, they took a look at it, but, um, they were just waiting for the A two survey, I just wanted to make sure if there was anything else I needed to, to get approved, or, or to do.
Not at all, because we probably approved that years ago.
Okay.
You know, digging the trench and building that driveway. But, uh, regs changed since then. We're, we're much more, um, I don't know the word, I don't want to use anal, but we're, we're harder on drainage, because. These storms we're having, we're not getting more water every year, but we're getting harder storms, and so. Hard water, short duration, like today, two point, three point two five inches in eighteen hours. So, that's a over twenty-five year storm event, which is occurring like eight or nine times a year now. I'm sure that they will up, update that, but we're not waiting for the update, we're, we're making people design now for what's changing in the climate.
Absolutely.
But I do welcome you to Mallory Road, I hope you have a lot of kids, because, and send them the booth, because it's the best school in Connecticut.
Thank you.
And, uh, and really welcome the, welcome to this area, it's beautiful. Uh, I know your lot next to Wayne, Wayne's an icon in the town. Served on a lot of boards, and, uh, that's a beautiful lot, I know the driveway. So I'm going to go look at it, if it's okay with you, Pat.
Absolutely.
To jump up the street, if you want to meet with me.
Sure.
We, we could connect. Just give Julie your email or your text, and then we could text, and then I'll meet you, because I, I walk around up there all the time trespassing. Sorry, so, um, but welcome, and, uh, good for you.
Will do, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anybody else have questions? Any, we, we don't want them to come, as we all know, we don't want them to come back in the next meeting and then say, could you give me this, this, but I think the roof drainage and the pipe on the road is, is what I need right now.
And the driveway drainage.
I have one.
And the driveway drains, right.
Okay.
Suzanne, you have anything?
I have one question for you.
Good.
Um, so, okay, so the, shows the, in, down by Mallory Road, where we're showing the brook, okay? And it kind of just ends there on the map, but then where I have a question for you, because I, you know, this part I still get confused on with the map, so it's showing the swell, and if you go down towards Mallory, and there's that arrow, and then the swell kind of ends, is that an area of issue? Because I don't know where the brook is, that's, I'm. Is that an area of issue? Cause I don't know where the brook is. That's, I'm just asking.
Great one, Sue. That's why we need people with, with detail. So Pat, look at that. I mean, cause you can't just blow water out into a stream. Even though it's been blowing off for twenty years. Um, there needs to be some kind of, um, what we call detention. And Curtis will understand that.
Okay.
And make sure he's at the next meeting.
I will, for sure.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, Pat, we'll see you next meeting.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
What's next, Julie?
That was it.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow. An hour. That, that's kinda long. Alright, I'll look for a motion adjourned, gang.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so Carrie, we'll see you all next month, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Good night.
Russ.
Yeah.
Bye.
Thank you.